The December 11, 2018 Regular Meeting of the Menner Exempt Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3313.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Mr. Wilson, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Buckley?
Present.
Ms. Jisling?
Present.
Mrs. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Tuttle?
Here.
Mrs. Briner?
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening. I would like to welcome everyone to the December 11, 2018 Regular Meeting of the Menner Exempt Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each board member has received for the review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval and the district's paperless Board of Education Agenda System Board Dox. The public can access the agenda through the school district's website. The agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing the Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the superintendent and chief financial officer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda where the board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on any subject, whether it is an item on the agenda or another issue. When addressing the board, please state your name. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please address questions to the president. This meeting is being televised on a delayed basis and will be shown on spectrum cable, Channel 1026 in Menner and Channel 1025 in Menner-on-the-Lake. This meeting is also being videotaped and will be shown on our YouTube channel, Cardinal TV, Menner, Ohio. Please place your mobile telephones on silent mode during the meeting. And next we'll have approval of the minutes. I'm going to break these down individually. For October 9, 2018, regular board meeting, looks like we had a couple amendments.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes, except for November 20.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes. And our special board meeting on November 1?
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes. And our regular board meeting on November 20?
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Abstain, absence.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes. And our special board meeting on November 27?
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes. And now we'll have hearing of the public on agenda items only. Seeing none, superintendent's report and recommendations, Mr. Porter.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. I have the following recommendations listed under the consent agenda and recommend approval of Items 5A1 through 5A3.
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam President, members of the board, we have two students who earned achievement awards for superior writing from the National Council of Teachers of English, Elizabeth Katovich and Olivia Lampros. Unfortunately, neither student was able to attend tonight's meeting, but Mrs. Coleman and Mr. Crowe from the high school will briefly recognize them in absentia.
Thank you. Mr. Porter, Mr. Wilson, Madam President, members of the board. The National Council of Teachers of English, or NCTE, English Award for Achievement in Writing was established in 1957 to encourage student writers to be the best they could be and to recognize the best student writers in our nation. Only students who are juniors may be nominated by their English teachers to participate. Each student submits two pieces of writing, one prompt-based and one chosen by the student, which are read by national judges and judged based on expression of ideas, use of language, unique perspective, and creativity. Last year's prompt was "Changing the Narrative," which recognized the importance of stories and storytelling, both real and fictitious, in shaping our lives. Two Menner High School students, Elizabeth Katovich and Olivia Lampros, were nominated by their English teacher, Sharon Bowles, and they achieved the highest distinction possible, the Certificate of Superior Writing. Only nine students at six schools across Ohio achieved this level of distinction. Although they could not be with us tonight, we are so proud of Elizabeth and Olivia for developing their strong, unique voices and showing an artistry in their composition that has earned them well-deserved national recognition.
Thank you, and congratulations again to Elizabeth and Olivia. At this time, I would like to invite Mr. Hammond to the podium for his presentation on Sixth Grade Camp.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Porter and Mr. Wilson. Each year in the fall, following the conclusion of Sixth Grade Camp, our middle school administrators and camp facilitators meet to reflect on camp experience and consider improvements to make for the next year. This past fall, camp was spread out over a six-week time period to accommodate our students and staff based on the facility capabilities at Hiram Camp. This six-week period involved a great deal of scheduling adjustments at the building level as well as staff coverage. As a result of our reflection meeting, we determined it was time to look at our camp options. We researched and collected information on six other camps. We made phone calls to those camps. We spoke with their directors. We checked references, and we read reviews. It became increasingly clear that one camp stood out above the others, and that was Camp Fitch. Camp Fitch is located right on Lake Erie. It's just a few miles across the state line in North Springfield, Pennsylvania. It's about an hour and 15 minutes by bus. Camp Fitch stood out for a number of reasons, to name a few, they have updated buildings, they've built new cabins for living quarters, they have a dining hall, as you can see behind me, that can seat 600. And by the way, from this dining hall, you have a great view of Lake Erie. It's right on the lake. They have over 30 student activities to choose from, which is more than double from our previous options. One of the biggest draws is that we can also schedule both of our middle schools next fall in the same week, meaning we can have Memorial attend from September 9 through the 11th. That's a Monday through Wednesday. Then we'll have Shore come out and they'll attend from the 11th to the 13th. What's great about this is we'll have the Shore students come out on the bus that Wednesday morning on the 11th. There'll be a transition period. The Memorial students will use those same buses to come back, so we're going to be efficient with use of the buses during that time. It's exciting for us, it really is, to go from six weeks to go to one week. It cuts down on all the scheduling issues. It cuts down on all the staffing issues. It's a win-win. I have to tell you, I'm excited to show you here in just a moment about the facilities. They were really exciting to see. The facilities are excellent, and so are the activity options. Some of our middle school administrators, including myself, as well as our camp facilitators, we went out to make a visit to Camp Fitch back in November. We toured the camp. We ate in the dining hall, so we had a chance to see what the food was like. We ate with a new group of students that had just come in. We were able to meet with Tom Parker, who's a camp director. We had time to ask questions about the curriculum and the organizational model for how to prepare for this next year. This was all extremely helpful. The cost of the camp is slightly more. It's $125, which is up from our current cost of $105. The benefits of Camp Fitch are phenomenal. They're very positive upgrades. I do want to note that we've had a longstanding relationship with Camp Hiram, and we have appreciated your willingness to always work with us over the years. And I'll answer any questions in just a moment. I want to share with you what we have for living space. You'll notice over here on the left side, these are new lodges. They're indoor lodges. You see there's seven of them. They can seat 304 students in them. They're fully equipped. They've got carpet. They've got heat and air conditioning, and they also have full restrooms with showers, so those could be utilized. Actually, up next to those is a common space, lounge, that the students can hang out in if they wish as well. The next living space, these are brand-new. These are cabins, and actually, all these cabins, where you see the front door is up here towards the front, all those face the lake. I want to stay in one of these. These are cool. These have 16 beds and a cushion. They have bunk beds in there. What they have is they have two sides. One side, each side will have seven beds for students and one bed for a counselor or an adult. They have a half restroom in here. Students can use the lodges to take the showers in. I would like to be one of the counselors in here. These have open windows. They have shades that you can pull down, but you can leave it open the whole time. It's going to be early September. It typically is warm. Remember, last year we had the heat wave. This is a cool place to stay. These next ones, maybe a few students will stay in. These are right up next to the lake. These are called cabins, and these are all open-air. Now, they have the capability, and you may not be able to see it from there, but they have a nice netting that you can pull down on the sides to either keep out bugs or probably little critters that crawl along out there. But the cabins are really cool also, so they're really an outdoor space, is what it is. It's a shelter. You can see there's eight beds in each of those, and if we go on down, this is staff lodging. It's wonderful. It's air-conditioned. There's heat. They've got an outdoor patio in the back. They've got a little brook that runs along the back there. We had a full tour of the camp, and it was exciting to see. It's a great layout. We're preparing for this. We've met once with Tom Parker. We've met once as camp facilitators to start organizing. We have another organizational meeting with him at the end of January, and we want to make sure we're fully prepared for next year. Questions?
Will there be other schools visiting at the same time?
No. The camp will be ours. What was really nice is, we asked about other districts that are coming. Mayfield goes there, Twinsburg goes there, schools from the west side come all the way out there. Sometimes, if schools or grade levels aren't big enough, they'll have, they'll host a couple at a time. Each of our middle schools has the whole camp to themselves, which would really be nice.
What kind of communication plan are you going to have, Tim?
With the parents?
With the students?
You mean, with laying this out with all of our families?
Sure.
Yes. We're going to have, once we have one more meeting with Tom, that's part of our organizational piece, is setting up a date to have the presentation to our families, how much it's going to cost, what we're going to do. Right now, we're setting up our two-and-a-half-day plan of how many activities we're going to have over that time. At Hiram Camp, we had an hour-and-a-half time for every activity. Here, we're going to have an hour's time, hour block of time, which means we're going to be able to get in 10 activity times over those two-and-a-half days and three optional activity times, which is a great benefit for the kids. They get to choose exactly what they want besides some other areas. So, we're going to roll this out. We don't have the exact date yet, but that's our next piece.
I love the fact that it's on Lake Erie, so even though they're not in Ohio, we share Lake Erie, so it seems like they're still close to home.
It's a great layout. It really is. I would like to have the opportunity to take all you out there. That would be fun. So, any other questions?
Mr. Hammond, how close are the medical facilities in case there was an emergency or somebody gets ill?
Yes, the medical facilities themselves are actually right next to the lives down here. We have another location up top that we can get to. We have to make sure that we're all prepared with any kits and things like that that we have. But, here's the other thing. Typically, we have only taken one nurse when we've gone in the past years. We're going to have to take two this time, because we're taking roughly 270, 275 students at least, so we're going to take two full-time people. We'll make sure, if one should be housed down in the main lodging facility, we should have one up above, because it takes a hill to get up to where a lot of the lodging area is up there. So we need to have two there. Good question. Anything else? I'll be happy to answer more on down the road, okay? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you to the team that reviewed that, made the recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Madam President and members of the board, I am recommending approval of Agenda Item C1, related to Certified Personnel, and C2 through C5, all related to human resource matters.
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Thank you. This concludes my portion of tonight's agenda.
Board of Education report and recommendations. We need to appoint a president pro tem for the January 8 organizational meeting.
Would you like to nominate Mr. Tuttle?
Okay. And?
No formal votes needed.
Okay.
To do that, so if that's...
All right. Do we need to vote on this approval of the January meetings?
Yes.
Okay. So, we need a motion to approve the January 8 meetings for the organizational tax budget and the regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes. And the legislative report, Mr. Tuttle?
Well, thank you, Mrs. Briner. I wanted to try to do this with one eye. Thank you. So, you may recall in September, I reported on possible changes coming to the state graduation requirements, moving, including two more classes. That change did take place. You'll see in the December report that, heeding the cause of many, the Ohio General Assembly extended the two alternative high school graduation path rates to the class of 2019 and 2020. Recall, they were going to be required to begin the new, choose one of the two pathways and the changes, the alternatives. On my report there, I have the alternative pathways and those selected items that they can choose from. They can choose two. So now, what was only going to be the 2018 class, it's moved forward. It includes the 2019 and 2020. So it moves it forward, gives them a little more time to choose their pathways and recognize what they want to do. Couple other points there, further down on that report. It's kind of interesting that House Bill 491 was regarding treasurer liability changes headed to the governor. 491 exempts from liability treasurers of school districts and ESEs for loss of public funds in certain instances. Under the Act, treasurers are exempt from liability of loss of public funds when their official duties have been performed without negligence or wrongdoing. An additional exemption from liability for loss of public funds is granted for payments made to a teacher by a treasurer or superintendent unless the loss results from negligence or Fair recognition for negligence or wrongdoing. Obviously, if it's negligence or wrongdoing, that's not an exemption.
If I may just add quickly, the current laws that have been in effect for many decades require a treasurer to hold a performance bond, which provides the Board of Education reimbursement for a finding for recovery or some other loss of assets, and the bonding companies then go back to the treasurer personally and say, "You need to reimburse it." So it's kind of a guaranteed reimbursement by having a performance bond. This new legislation doesn't remove the protection for a Board of Education to receive reimbursement, but rather changes from a performance bond to liability insurance that the district has for errors and omissions or acts of public officials. So the school district and Board of Education still have protections and opportunities to receive refunds until a finding for recovery is fully resolved. It doesn't diminish the protection that a board has.
Thank you, Dan.
I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Are you saying they're trying to change it from a performance bond to E&amp;O?
Yes.
Do you have an opinion on that, Dan?
Yes, I was asked to be involved with the legislative process and declined. I understand the responsibilities that I take when the board employs me as a treasurer and that we're dealing with the public's funds, not private companies' funds, and do feel an extra sense of responsibility to satisfy the annual financial audit that we've performed all due diligence and the proper oversight of the public's monies. Unfortunately, there were several instances in the past year that employees were processed through and employed without proper licensure or had lost their licensed status after employment, and the auditor came in to make a finding for recovery, and even though the treasurer didn't do anything wrong other than process pay based on the first best information available, was, the finding for recovery was against the treasurer. Funds were reimbursed by the bonding company, and then the treasurer had a responsibility to do that. As harsh as that sounds, again, I think that we have to be held to a higher standard when we're handling the public's money, so there's still protection for the board, and that's good. I didn't have the issue that many of my colleagues had with the old system. I kind of went into this eyes-open. No one forced me to pursue this opportunity to serve the board and the public. I understood that's part of my responsibility, so I'm kind of lukewarm on it.
Dan, that's it. Thank you.
So I just want to say a couple things about the graduation standards. When we were at the OSBA conference down in Columbus a few weeks ago, I sat in a legislative session, and it was specifically, we had Representative Cup was in that, Representative Ryan, a senator, which her name slips my mind, of course.
Lainer? Was it Lainer?
Yes, yes. And one of the things that they were very passionate about was the graduation standards and trying to come up with something, because they are feeling fully that not all kids need to go to college. We have to have pathways for kids that are going to be successful in life when they graduate from school and successful when they go on to college. And one of the things I found, I actually ran after Representative Ryan after, because I wanted to catch him, and he was saying there's a lot of pushback in the Senate on that, and I don't understand the, well, I guess he said it was a lot of old-school thinking that's the pushback back there, that some people feel that the only way to be successful in life is college. So, my question is, do we have any type of position on supporting those standards? Should we put together anything that says, or do we, have we in the past, that we are fully supportive of finding pathways that are fit every, each and every student in our schools? Or is that something that isn't really done?
I can speak on that.
Sure.
We believe in the flexibility of standards, because we too believe that there's more than one good path, other than just the college path, and that's certainly an excellent path to follow as well. But sometimes, we have students who are not going to college, and if they can be gainfully employed and have skills coming out of high school where they can contribute, they can feel satisfaction in their jobs and grow and be promoted, there's tremendous value to that. We also have students who go to college and, for whatever reason, may not make it through college, and we don't want them to come to a complete dead end. And again, if they are able to change course and have some skills available, so there have to be multiple paths, and one of the concerns was, the state standards, the state did not have standards ready with multiple paths, as we had hoped, and it makes sense, from my personal position, to put, you know, a delay on the graduating standards for 2019. 2020 will be similar, but if you've noticed, they added a few additional requirements, which probably makes sense, so that there's a gradual shift and an increase in the standards. So they are starting to move toward higher standards, yet build in the flexibility that I think is long overdue. So, I think with, you know, my hope is with legislation in 2021, 2022, we can begin to see some meaningful changes that, and certainly, we hope to be able to embrace those.
And I'd like to add to the process question about, do we take positions? There have been occasions where the Board of Education has passed a resolution declaring a certain position on an issue of importance to the district and direct us to communicate to our elected officials and legislative leaders and advocate on behalf of the students' community and the board. We also rely on the Ohio School Boards Association, the Buckeye Association of School Administrators, the Superintendent Organization, the Ohio Association of School Business Officials, all have full-time legislative liaisons that advocate on behalf of common interest. Tom is our legislative liaison, also has opportunities for input and reaction, and you'll recall at the Capitol Conference, we have a business session, and one of the annual things that are delicate this year, Mary votes on, is the official legislative platform that guides the activities at the Ohio School Boards Association. So, there are multiple opportunities to kind of formally declare a position, and there have been occasions, and it's based on Board of Education feelings on the importance of a particular issue, to declare an independent application for a certain path.
I think the Career Tech Information Night that we just saw last week was a wonderful, tangible evidence of the variety of pathways that we want to make available to the students in our district. I was especially excited to see how many people came out that night. It was wonderful. A lot of students, a lot of parents, and that our Lake Shore Compact District members were having students, sophomores, I believe, come over and get a chance to see that during the daytime, and it was even a new program, Urban Agriculture, which I thought was fascinating. So, so many opportunities for kids, and I think choice is always the bottom line for what's best for them.
As a board, would we like to do a resolution supporting the multi-paths? Or should we?
I'm just throwing it out there. I don't know. I mean, if we feel like we have enough behind us with Mr. Tuttle and Mary being on the, one of the big cheeses out there, I don't know if it's necessary or not. I just wanted to kind of question that. So they get enough support, and they know that they have our support, because they, it appears that they need support.
We've done it in the past.
Okay.
We've been on this path for several years here at Menner. I think it couldn't hurt. What do you think, Tom?
I think it's a good idea. Identify, Dan and Mr. Porter, pull together a resolution, and send it to the important people who need to know that, who represent us.
If I may suggest, the legislature is just concluding their lame-duck session, and then we'll reset, or I'm sorry, adjourn until they're reconstituted after the first of the year and also after the governor is officially taken office. Perhaps Bill could work on a draft resolution and share it with the board in advance, and we adopt it at our January 8 meeting. That would still be in advance of the legislature convening for their next session.
That makes a lot of sense, especially as... That makes a lot of sense, especially as the new legislators are sworn in just to underscore what we've been doing. And I think one of the biggest problems that we've seen, and why I think this has been stalled and delayed for quite a while, is they didn't have any of those certifications for students. There was only a couple that you could earn if you were under the age of 18, so that was a barrier for some students. So that industry certifications were very limited. I think they forged this idea, which was fine, but didn't have any of the details ironed out, and so that created kind of a gray area for lots of kids, and might have made them, whether they wanted to or not, they could only go through that college prep path to earn their diplomas. And that seems so unfair.
Anything else? Thank you. Bill, are we prepared for these state requirements for the next couple of years?
We will be in good shape relative to, prior to these changes that were recent. I think all districts in Ohio had a sense of urgency. We are in much better standing with the changes that have been implemented.
Okay.
And can you get us information on how many students would be taking a workforce readiness test, and as well as what percentage of our seniors becoming college freshmen at state institutions are remediation-free? I think they published those statistics within a year, if I'm not mistaken, after they...
That's right.
Yeah. It just, we can, maybe even looking at it historically, if we could maybe look at five years' worth, give us a sense of, you know, where we have some strengths or where we have areas that we could shore up, just based on that particular statistic.
Yes. I can get you information.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I will prepare a draft.
Thank you. All done, Tom?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to Chief Financial Officer's report and recommendations. Mr. Wilson?
Yes, I recommend the Board of Education approve and authorize Items 7A through 7G as presented in the board agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Please go.
I'd like to just quickly note that the Item B, or I'm sorry, Item C, the enter-fund transfers, is the last step in the full implementation of the general fund operating reserve fund that we've been discussing since last summer and formally enacted last month. And as we had indicated, primary funding source are from our health insurance reserve, dental insurance reserve, and workers' compensation reserve. And we're also increasing the general fund budget by $2,652,473.55 to complete the initial funding of this general fund operating reserve. So that's part of the actions presented this evening.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
And separately, the County Budget Commission is earlier than normal. We typically don't get this in time for the December meeting, but we're presenting Agenda Item 7H, approval of the resolution to recertify tax rates for tax year 18, and which are taxes collected in calendar year 19. The tax rates were slightly adjusted based on changes in values. The levy to avoid an operating deficit is the only one that had an adjustment, and that was downward from 8.45 mils to 7.70 mils, which will still produce the same amount of revenue, which is what's required by the boards, or the communities that renew that levy. So we ask that you recertify the tax rates and authorize me to file them with the Lake County Budget Commission.
So moved.
Second?
Please call the roll.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
That completes my items.
Thank you. Any unfinished business? No? Any new business? None? All right. Now we'll have hearing of the public on any items.
Madam President, Mr. Wilson, and I'm sorry, Mr.?
Porter.
Porter, excuse me, and board members. First of all, thank you for allowing us to be here. My name is Ken Wright. I'm the pastor of Life Point Church, and many of these folks behind me are part of our congregation. Some of you may or may not know, we have an existing partnership. Four years ago, we launched Life Point Church, and Menner High School gave us the opportunity to, to start our church and to launch our church. And we believe that the Brentmore property would give us the ability to start the next chapter in the history of our church. It's, one of our goals and desires is to continue to connect with our community through various ministry opportunities and outreach programs, and to provide what some call a third place, and I'll explain that. We all have a place where our first place is our home, our second place is our place of occupation, students, school, but we all, we all have a third place too, and that may be a gym that we go work out in, it may be a Starbucks that we hang out, just the place where people come. And we would love for Life Point Church to be able to create a third place for people in our community, to continue to come and grow and to be nourished spiritually, physically, and emotionally. Again, it's always been our goal to connect with our community, and we want to continue to do that by providing a place for our community. So, any questions?
Thank you. All right. Next, we will entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss the sale of real estate. We may take action after the meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Please call the roll.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
All right. We're going to go back into regular session, and we have a resolution number 2018-12, a resolution rejecting the high public auction bid for the sale of the real property known as Brentmore Elementary School located at 7671 Johnny Cake Ridge Road, Menner, Ohio. Whereas, this board has carefully considered the high bid received at that auction and believes that it is in the best interest of this school district to reject the bid. Any further discussion?
I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
And a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Please call the roll.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Thank you, and everyone have a good holiday.